Amy, you want to lead us in the flag suit this one?
I'd love to.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Good morning, welcome everyone to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you would please join us in the flag suit and remain standing for a moment as this conference will be led this morning by Supervisor Amy Shuck.
Thank you, please join me in saluting our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We'll take up the Board of Supervisor matters and I'll begin with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Right, thank you Mr. Chairman. First things first, I want to say welcome to the man to my left, this is his first day sitting next to me and congratulations on the appointment and great to have you here at the board, Jason, look forward to working with you in this new capacity. A few things I want to go over, Board of Supervisors matters, I fortunately got to represent the board in depositions yesterday for the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority and I've had very few occasions in my life where I feel like my mind is going to be blown and that was one of them, but I survived and I'm here to tell the story and actually it was bartending last night at the Taste Streets in Tulare, pouring wine, I was so mentally absent that I was actually creating my own blends for people upon their request, actually didn't have anything to drink myself, but was very good at creating concoctions for others, so it was good fun. A few things I wanted to go over for this week, Friday there will be a San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority meeting at 9:00 AM in Fresno at the Board of Supervisors chambers and that was the one public meeting I wanted to highlight this week and wanted to remind everybody that on Sunday daylight savings time ends, so I know Amy will be late to work by an hour on Monday, but I hope everyone else shows up on time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You fall back. So you're an extra hour, right?
Regardless, you're going to be an hour off.
Just saying. My turn?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. I also would like to welcome Jason up to the dais and I hope now your outfit doesn't mean that you're going to always be black and white on your, okay, I know that, that's why you're, see the tie is gray, so it's in the middle, okay. Last week I along with some of the other supervisors were in Stockton to attend the San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties, it was a very good meeting slash conference, there was an excellent, I thought, presentation on homeless and what San Joaquin County is doing there, as a matter of fact during the presentation I was sending some emails to Jason and to Chaz, our homeless coordinator, so I think I brought back some good things that maybe we can initiate here. Last night I attended, I was asked to be on a task force for Visalia Unified School District, they're calling it a common grounds task force and what we are going to be is an advisory to the VUSD board as far as, oh, last night we talked about dress code and freedom of speech and what would be appropriate and not, so we're going to be tasked with some pretty important things and I may be talking with some of you out there in the community too as far as some of your ideas as far as what is appropriate and not. And then I'd just like to say I believe Thursday, I don't see Rhonda here, the mammogram bus is going to be here, parked usually out in front of HR, so I encourage everybody, not everybody, well, everybody, give it a shot fellas, see what it's like, to get your mammograms, thank you.
Rhonda is having her deposition taken today.
Oh, is that where she's at, okay.
Thank you for that, Amy.
Men can, men can get breast cancer, so that's what I say.
I just wanted to point out today that Supervisor Crocker is not with us, he is at a self-help county conference and for those of you who think self-help housing, this is self-help counties, those are counties like Tulare where the voters have voted to assess themselves, have sent sales tax towards our transportation, so he's at that meeting today and will not be present. Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, last week my wife took my two granddaughters back to Indianapolis for the big FFA conference and on Saturday she got her American Farmer degree and so Diane called me, she says, hey, if you'll turn over to RFD TV, you'll see her get an award. So I turned over there and sure enough, within about 30 minutes, California came on and I watched her get an award, so what a great deal that was.
Great, congratulations.
A bit hard on my wife, she didn't get home before 3:00 Monday morning, had to go to work at 7:00, it was, yesterday was not a good day for her.
For all concerned.
But anyway, so this Thursday I've got a Eastern Tulare GSA meeting and that's about it for me, thank you.
I was going to just say that on the San Joaquin Valley Association Conference that four of the board members attended, that the opening night was a presentation by Victor Davis Hansen and such an illuminating speaker, well-known classicist professor at Fresno State, who's gained quite a lot of national notoriety, become a published author in many pieces, but what's interesting about this gentleman is that he lives in Selma, on a family farm they've had for four generations or something, but he's also on the staff at the Hoover Institute and Stanford University, so he lives, he's in both worlds, he's in the rural part of California, the interior part of the state, he knows what we are like, that's his heritage, in fact, you know, exactly the same age, and then he has this also living in the Bay Area and seeing what that's like and how there's such a disconnect and the disconnect is quite, as we know, is considerable and presents a real challenge, how do we deal with that, because there's just a different world there, the finances are such that they don't really comprehend what their actions and the effect it has on us, think of utility bills as an example, and minimum wage laws. Anyway, I thought it was an excellent presentation and been an excellent conference, a lot of stuff squeezed into really the one day of the conference on Thursday and out of that came also a discussion about how we can really improve upon the association, we've been in existence for some time, but we really could do more and we need to do more because the nine counties of the San Joaquin Valley and Mariposa represent 4 million people and we need to have more political clout than we have acting individually and by acting jointly we can do more to support one another, so I thought that was really good and we're going to kind of change the format going forward, I believe. That concludes our Supervisors Matters and at this time we always have a great time of hearing from our Sacramento lobbyists about what we escaped, what we didn't escape and what we may face in the future and so at this time I'd like to introduce Paul Yoder from Shaw Yoder Antworth and regarding an update on state of California legislation. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, Board Member.
Paul was in Stockton also.
Paul was there too.
I was in Stockton and so I guess my apologies, the board members who've heard this before, maybe I should go over here and I can give Supervisor Ennis the report, but I am going to change things up a little bit, it's going to be more Tulare specific today. I had a 20-page PowerPoint and Julieta was supposed to load that, so I don't know, okay, well, I'll just go off my-
She failed again. She didn't recognize the pronunciation, Paul, it's Julieta, you gotta add the "ta" at the end.
Yeah, and that's why my PowerPoint's not up there, perfect, I'll just go off my notes here. Good morning again, board members, congratulations, Jason, well deserved, so let's talk about where we are, one week before the next statewide election in California, we have about 15, 16, 17 billion dollars socked away, a big difference from a decade ago when we had a $30 billion deficit in the state of California, revenues through the current fiscal year, through the end of the first quarter of the current fiscal year are a billion dollars over projection, so not only does the state of California bank, it's got money coming in over and above the expectations and that's a pretty nice place to be again in contrast to where we were a decade ago. At the proverbial 40,000 feet legislatively, I think the biggest victory for counties in the 2017-2018 legislative session was the defeat of Assembly Bill 1250, that would have significantly hampered every county's ability to deliver services, that was a collective effort, CSAC, firms like ours, frankly the not-for-profits in California were hugely helpful in defeating that bill and they deserve credit for that. Still at 40,000 feet and still impacting all counties, well, I would say some counties more than others right now, but potentially all counties because it involves wildfires, was the final form of Senate Bill 901, that was a bill that had to do with wildfires, it had to do with what would, the requirements on investor-owned utilities going forward, there was a move by some to restrict local governments' ability to seek legal recourse as part of that package, kept that out of the package, local governments will retain that ability and that legal tool going forward. Also, I think as the board members know, big year for housing, homelessness package, I think it's about 2.6 million dollars that's going to be coming to Tulare, to the city of Visalia, to the continuum of care for homelessness here locally, and again, 2.6 million dollars with a little additional money, I want to say $150,000 for homeless foster youth and you have three years to spend that money. In addition to that package, there's things from a prior year and a prior session that are really starting to come into their own and produce some money for the counties, Proposition Two, there's a NOFA on the street for that, so we're finally going to see that money, the No Place Like Home Initiative, obviously there's a ballot measure to validate that, but housing and community development is raring up, getting ready to get that money out to the counties. When talking about the county's legislative priorities for the last two-year session, you said go get money for water and wastewater and we did, you said go get money again for homelessness and we did, you said go get money for forest management and we did, and so I think, I was looking again at the platform and it's always interesting to, well, it's good to have goals, it's good to tell your lobbyist, lobbyist, fetch, right, and throw that tennis ball and see what happens, we obviously work together on all those things and I think there's a lot of success in there. Having said that, and I think of the over 20 items, I would say we probably had success on about half of them, so having said that, there are still some items to work on, clearly, SECO reform, what we're going to do to fund water cleanup in the state of California, particularly in certain areas like Tulare County, those are things that I'll be the first to say we still need to work on to get them accomplished in the next session. So looking ahead at this election next Tuesday, I appreciate daylight savings time being mentioned, Proposition Seven, I never, almost never editorialize in presentations like this, but you know, I go to bed pretty early and I'd like to be able to say that I didn't go to bed in the summer before the sun went down and so maybe that indicates how I'm going to vote on that proposition, but you know, that's, for me, that's a personal one. Props 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, I'd say about half the ballot directly impacts counties, directly impacts Tulare County, 1 and 2 because they deal with housing, 3, that's a resources bond, a lot of money in there especially for the projects in the Central Valley, 5 would adversely affect county revenues, 6, I think we all know about the transportation issue and the funding for that, and like I said, that's half the ballot measures that the voters are going to vote on by next Tuesday. Want to note, a political note, we just broke the record for the most money ever spent on a ballot proposition, $111 million in opposition to Proposition Eight, that's the dialysis initiative, $111 million in opposition to that ballot measure and again, folks in Sacramento are talking about that being a record. So, what else, let's look ahead, with that money in the bank, with the new governor, we don't know who, but we're going to have a new governor regardless, what we want to really focus on right now is that the legislative analyst most recently came out with a report on realignment, the Department of Finance is going to follow that up within the next month and they're going to issue their own report. For those of you that don't know what realignment is and especially for the public, multiple times over the last 25 years, the state has taken services that it was providing and given the counties the responsibility for those services, either in whole or in part, we have a superstructure of billions of dollars annually now, health, behavioral health, social services, justice, public safety, where the state and the counties don't just have the sort of fundamental relationship that is written into the Constitution, we have this incredibly intricate fiscal relationship that's developed over time. The last realignment was a couple of years ago, I think we're going to see another realignment in 2019, why is that? The in-home supportive services program, the state is still trying to figure out exactly what it ought to do with that program, the state's trying to figure out what responsibilities the county ought to have fiscally and at the same time, I think the consensus in Sacramento is that the counties have very little control over that program and so what the legislative analysts has suggested is that since counties don't have any control over the costs in that program, that the state start to assume a share of cost in that arena, but that in exchange for that, and they actually peg it at 500 to 800 million dollars, in exchange for that 500 to 800 million dollar assumption of cost over here, that over here, maybe there ought to be a different arrangement, for example, in the public safety arena with respect to incompetent to stand trial detainees in California, and so the LAO's proposal is the state assume costs, but then shift costs over here to the counties, that's one proposal, we'll see what the Department of Finance comes up with, we'll see what the incoming gubernatorial administration comes up with, there's going to be a lot of talk about that, and I'm going to close here in a second, happy to take questions, but the thing about the next realignment that's super important for Tulare County and the Central Valley is that historically the realignments haven't, they could have taken into account certain factors in the valley better than they did, I think we did a little bit better in 2011 in the last big realignment than we did certainly in 1991, and 1991 predates me representing this county, but I think we did, well, I don't think, I know in 2011 we did some things, we got more money to the Central Valley than historically had been the case in the AB 109, public safety realignment, and more money came to Tulare County as a result. So I think that's the challenge for me, certainly, that's the next tennis ball that the next board gets to have me chase, but it's a challenge for all of us, including staff, departmental staff, but we're up for it, we're ready for it and you know, we'll just see what happens, happy to take any questions, Mr. Chair.
Questions?
Question I had, you know, you mentioned with the next realignment, Paul, and first of all, thank you for what you do for Tulare County, you do a great job and really do represent a very diverse platform and do a great job on all fronts, so thank you for that. You mentioned the incompetent to stand trial as being a potential cost for counties and I figured since you mentioned that, that's probably one of the frontrunners to be realigned, would you kind of explain that a little bit and what type of a realignment we're going to be looking at and is floating around up there in Sacramento right now?
Sure, and there's, so, thank you and through the chair, first I want to make sure everybody knows technically, I think realignment's going to change and what you're going to see in this upcoming Department of Finance report is some recommendations about technically how flows, how funds flow, I practiced that 10 times this morning, I still mess it up, how funds flow, because if I had an org chart right now, if I had done a PowerPoint, let's just say hypothetically, and I projected it up, the current funding stream within realignment, I think the public for starters would go, are you kidding us, and it's because it's pretty Byzantine, it really is, it's pretty complicated, so I think the Department of Finance is going to be, what they're really going to weigh in first is on the technical elements of realignment, I think they're going to have some suggestions as far as that goes, then at the macro level Supervisor, like I said, you really could move things around, it's almost infinite, given how many programs the state has and counties have, I want to tell you one good recommendation from the legislative analyst is that counties have more flexibility in another realignment with respect to how you can move funds between the different issue areas or departments to meet the priorities that you identify. So I think there's some potential good things that could come out of another realignment, but on the incompetent to stand trial, these are severely mentally ill individuals who are also accused of crimes, this has really been a who's in charge type of situation going on for quite some time, the state hospitals are full, most county jails are full, there aren't enough psychiatric beds, I think it's almost, you know, universal agreement that there aren't enough psychiatric treatment beds currently in the state of California and I just think, in a sense, the state's going to try to force that a little bit and try to get the counties more in the development of those beds and more into the treatment of those individuals, so that's what we see coming.
And the risk there, we had chatted about this last night, was that it's like the card you're dealt, you could see yourself hit with some huge medical expenses, psychological, psychiatric, drugs, that can be very, very expensive and you know, if that doesn't happen to you, okay, wonderful, but if it hits you and you're a small county, it could be devastating. And so those kinds of risks are very critical as we go forward and what we work with the state and of course through our lobbyists, the CSAC and RCRC, I mean, we need to really be very, very engaged in that whole process.
And then I had one more question too, I know that we have seen some tremendous economic growth throughout the state of California and as Supervisor Worthley mentioned in the presentation from Victor Davis Hansen last week, it was almost the tale of two Californias, you know, one of the things that I'd really like to see is more of an effort through grant programs or state monies for infrastructure in disadvantaged communities in, especially in the San Joaquin Valley, but you know, you look at the growth economically in other areas of the state, especially our isolated rural unincorporated communities, they're struggling to advance with housing for example, because there's not the wastewater infrastructure or the water infrastructure, so you know, if the state's looking for areas to invest in with surplus monies, man, I can think of a perfect place for that money to go, so some sort of a competitive grant program that would, and I know you had mentioned before that you do see redevelopment coming back, that would be a potential funding source, but you know, thinking outside the box and coming up with something I think would really help at least communities that I represent.
Thank you, can't may I through the chair, I think one of the best things, I'll say we, the big we have done in the last decade is we've sort of won the case in Sacramento that there are certain parts of Sacramento, whenever there's a big amount of money that's going to go out the door, there are certain communities that need money first to be able to even put the applications together, so it's a fair fight.
Yeah.
We did that especially with groundwater and it's happening with housing and I think it's just something, no matter what the pot of money is, what the new program is, we've just got to make sure that that happens. I think there's a lot more understanding of the valley and its needs over the last decade and we just got to keep going on that, you got, you know, tremendous legislators up and down, you know, top to bottom in the valley, going to have a little bit of turnover in the valley delegation here quickly, but I think we're going to be set in that respect no matter what, and there are a couple of them that have really been helpful in terms of just shining that light on the valley and its needs, so just going to keep going, Supervisor, yep.
Well, and I feel like grants should be kind of steered towards the cities because of this GSA we're in right now, to help fund to tertiary water.
Yep.
Or what they're even talking down the road is toilet-to-tap, but that kind of gets, that kind of bothers me a little bit, but tertiary water could really help our cities grow because they would have, they have the water they can reuse for recharge and water their parks and stuff like that, not having to pump the water out for, to do that on the other side, so to me, that's a biggie, that's a biggie for the future, for the, especially for the San Joaquin Valley.
Is our wastewater treatment plant to town move forward compared to the-
May I, Mr. Chair? If Proposition Three passes, that's an 8.8, 8.9 billion dollar resources bond, that would be on top of Proposition 68, which passed in June, about, close to 4 billion, right around 4 billion, and we still have some Proposition One monies rattling around. If the next governor chooses to try to prioritize those funds and get them out the door, if you total it all up, it's a tremendous amount of water, money for water and for wastewater and again, we just, if that is where the next administration wants to go, we've got to make sure that the valley can fight fairly, or maybe at an advantage, it's okay to say that, right, for, you know, very critically needed funding, yep.
So you're also saying that these forensic prisons, the county's going to have to pay part of the expense of that in the future is what you're looking at, because we've got one in Porterville.
Well, it wouldn't be to pay for, it wouldn't be a share of cost for facilities like Porterville, it would be to develop local programs, I think in some instances, depending on how far it goes, through the chair, depending on how far it goes, there might be a push to try to convince counties to partner, to develop new facilities and to staff them, just because, you know, like I said, we haven't built a prison, let alone a forensic prison in California correctional facility, I should say, in a while, I don't see that changing, I don't know anybody in Sacramento that sees that changing, and so as the state continues to grow, and it's not just the general population, it's all these subsets, right, that need to, you know, need treatment in many instances, where they go for that treatment is, I think, you know, that's a discussion that the incoming administration is probably going to want to have with the counties, so.
No question, just comment, first of all, thank you, Paul, I just really know that you have your finger on the pulse of what's happening in Sacramento and taking care of Tulare County and just in Mike's comment there, next Wednesday we're actually invited to the ribbon cutting for the Visalia Water Treatment Plant that just completed over a hundred million dollar project for, exactly for that, and a lot of it was from grants, some were from very low interest loans from the state for that, so.
Well, I think you have your perfect test dummy for the toilet-to-tap water and if they clean it, I think Mike Ennis would-
Well, they always say, they always said during the project, you can drink it, it's like, I'm not going to drink it.
Paul, thanks for being here, I, as was noted, you've done an excellent job for Tulare County and I would point out that Paul also represents a lot of other valley counties for the state legislature, which also I think is a benefit to us because of his connections that way.
May I, Mr. Chair?
And your wife doesn't hurt either.
I'm sorry.
Your wife doesn't hurt either.
I just want to, I saved it for last because I didn't want to get all verklempt or choked up earlier, but it's been an honor and a privilege serving you both.
Thank you.
Happy trails.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Very good, safe journey.
All right.
Thank you, Paul, take care.
It's only going to get better.
Okay, at this time we're going to present a proclamation recognizing October 2018 as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County, and I had told the clerk, I said, I wish we could have some accordion music or something playing, you know, before the program began, but we couldn't pull off that, so we do have a presentation, a proclamation, and I'd like to invite Larry Romanazi and David DePauli to the dais and I'm going to come down and present a proclamation.
I'm neither one of those individuals. David DePauli was involved in a head-on accident in Boston and his wife is in pretty bad shape, he couldn't make it, and Larry, I guess, was busy and he didn't make it. I'm Nick Patarnacola, past president of the Sons of Italy Lodge in Visalia.
You've got a great last name, Paul. And once you come back here and join me.
Whereas in the five centuries since Christopher Columbus, the son of Genoa, Italy, first set sail across the Atlantic Ocean, countless individuals have followed the course he chartered to seek a new life in America, and whereas since that time, generations of Italian Americans have helped shape our society and steer the course of our history, and whereas over 5.4 million Italians immigrated to the United States between 1820 and 1992, and whereas today there are over 26 million Americans of Italian descent in the United States, making them the fifth largest ethnic group, and whereas bound by enduring values of faith and family, Italian Americans have flourished in all areas of our public and economic life while preserving their proud Italian traditions, and whereas the Visalia Sons of Italy, Enrico Caruso Lodge was instituted in June 1927, and whereas founded upon the principles of liberty, equality, and fraternity, the Lodge's main first mission was to help acclimate all the Italian immigrants to the United States, helping them bond together, learn the language, and become citizens, and whereas today the Visalia Sons of Italy support scholarships, charities, as well as the Italian language and culture in order to continue their mission to preserve Italian traditions while improving the lives of those in the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize October 2018 as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County and encourages Tulare County residents to learn more about the history of Italian Americans, dated this date and signed by Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpoel-
Dated to date and signed by Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpoel, Amy Shucklian, Steve Worthley, and Mike Guinness.
I'm like sitting there looking at the camera pointing right at me.
Our lodge was formed in 1927. It was the second lodge in California for the Sons of Italy. The first lodge was Fresno, and we celebrate our 91st year this year. Tulare Lodge is a little bit younger than us, I think a couple of years younger. In addition to that, we have a sister city coalition with Putigano, Italy, with Visalia. There was over 100 individuals that came from Putigano to Visalia, and my parents were two of them. We also gave out eight scholarships this year. They ranged from $500 to $750. One more thing. A couple of years ago, Supervisor Shucklian came to our picnic to give our award, and she was in a hurry to go to Fresno. She couldn't stay for lunch. Well, she smelled the food and stayed.
And I was going to ask, is Larry cooking tri-tip this year? Is Larry cooking tri-tip this year?
Yeah, he's president.
Just tell me when. I'll be there.
I was going to say, that's probably the only meal she ever missed, but I wouldn't say that.
I didn't miss it.
All right. At this time, we will take our public comments. Anybody wishing to address the Board on matters that are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agendas, invite to come forward this time. Give us your name and address. Good morning.
Good morning. Abigail Solis, Self-Help Enterprises. Good morning, Board. I wanted to take a few minutes to update you on a project that Self-Help Enterprises has been working with and hope to gain your support. In 2014, Self-Help Enterprises was one of a few organizations that came together to talk with, back then, Assembly Member Henry T. Perea and propose a bill to help the over 170 communities in the San Joaquin Valley that lacked access to natural gas, either partially or completely. As a result of that, we have AB 2672 that was signed by Governor Brown in 2014. Since then, Self-Help Enterprises has worked to follow this bill and the implementation of it. As a result of it, the California Public Utilities Commission was authorized to begin a proceeding to identify disadvantaged communities in the San Joaquin Valley and analyze economic feasibility options to increase access to affordable energy in those disadvantaged communities. As a way of doing that, we were able to help secure 12 pilot communities out of the 170 to act as examples and potentially receive a pilot project, an energy project. Of those 12 communities, five of them are in Tulare County. Those five are Allensworth, Alpa, Ducor, Seville, and West Ocean. If those pilots are authorized in December by the commission, we're talking about almost $20 million of energy projects, either natural gas line extensions or electrification with community or household solar. So we're very close to getting this approved, and right now, your support would be instrumental in making this happen. There's two opportunities for people to participate and publicly support these projects. One is this Thursday in Fresno, but the second public participation hearing is actually here in Tulare County. And that is going to be next Wednesday at the Tulare County, sorry, the Tulare City Chambers at 6:00 PM. There are so many projects in Tulare County that the commissioner thought it was really important for one of the public participation hearings to happen here in Tulare County. As many of you know, the communities that I just listed are disadvantaged communities, and they are people of, most of them are of low income. And it's truly unfair that these people who make a lot less money than the average household have had to pay very high costs for propane, and some of them still use wood to fuel, you know, to warm their homes. And they've spent countless years having to suffer being cold in the winter and trying to avoid using heat because they can't afford the cost of propane. So we have a real opportunity to help five of these communities. If this is approved in December, the construction for these projects would start immediately next year. So there's going to be organizations, there's going to be residents there in person. But I think it'd make a great impact if we had county supervisors there talking in support of these projects as well.
I'm glad you brought that up. I just had a conversation with Colby Wells the other day. We do need to be engaged, but we need to push this because, as I understand it, three of these communities are expecting electrification, two of them are partially funding for natural gas. My understanding is if it's partially funded, it's not funded because there's no other source of funding to pay the other half. So if we're going to look at natural gas as an option for these communities, which would be very, very helpful to their costs, they need to be fully funded, not halfway funded. So there's some work to be done. So I think we need to support, but we need to support it conditionally. We need to get this, we need to get natural gas to some of these communities 100%. Not, again, partial funding is no funding because there's no other source of funding to come up with this other half.
So just to clarify, originally, the 12 communities were all presented with the option of possibly having natural gas or electrification, and it was up to the community to choose. This commissioner has really put a huge emphasis on what the community wants, so community preference is important to her. However, of those 12, we are now down to really two communities have the option, and that's the community of Seville and the community of Allensworth. They've been presented with the option of extending natural gas lines or electrification. So those are the two that we're talking about. But yes, we have not heard exactly how the remainder of that amount would be covered, so it is important to speak up and say that if that's how you feel about that.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you. And I have the addresses and the time and location that I can leave, so you can have that. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period, and we'll take up our consent calendar. Item number 27 is being taken off calendar. Are there any other items which members of the board or the public chooses to speak to separately?
Seeing none, I would move to approve the balances of the consent calendar.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. I am not going to indicate that every time we take an action today, Supervisor Crocker is not present. So the most we can have a vote today is four votes, and so we will please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous, four to zero. And we will take up our untimed calendar. Item number 25, a request from the Sheriff's Office to approve an agreement with Tulare County Office of Education to provide law enforcement services outlined in the Tobacco Law Enforcement Prop 56 Grant Program. Mass exodus of all the consent calendar items. Good morning. If you could move that microphone over.
Congratulations. This was a joint project by the Sheriff's Office, or actually Tulare County Office of Education and Tulare County Sheriff's Department. They applied for the grant. I'll let Tony Kavanaugh, he'll give you a little brief briefing on that and how they came across it.
Very good. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. We were contacted by the Department of Justice in June that there was monies available through Prop 56, which is tobacco tax dollars. And we've been doing tobacco education in our county for as long as I've been with the county, which is 30 years. And this is the first time that the state has allocated monies for tobacco enforcement in our communities. And we have, a lot of our rural schools that we work with, law enforcement is very thin based on the locations. And there's not a lot of enforcement in those stores. And all the students know where to go and buy alcohol and tobacco without being, you know, any law enforcement presence. So this grant came available, and we wrote with it, applied for it with the Sheriff's Department and Exeter PD. And we received the grant. 72 different agencies throughout the state applied for this grant, and every agency was awarded the grant either partially or fully funded for the amount they applied for. We received our full awardance of our grant, which was $885,000. And that includes one deputy full-time and one Exeter Police Department officer. And so we've been working with Lieutenant Brown, who's been very supportive of this. And he found the perfect deputy to work with our classes. We have an officer that goes into the classroom and teaches the curriculum that we use as Botman's Life Skill Curriculum, and we focus on alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and how advertising targets young people to buy their product at an early age. And we're getting great feedback. Lieutenant Brown went out and met with each one of our superintendents personally, and I got great feedback from them because that doesn't happen on a regular basis. And then getting great feedback from Deputy Reyes, who's teaching the lessons in 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade at Oak Valley School, Waikina, Sundell, Palaverde, and Buena Vista. And I'm getting nothing but great feedback from the superintendents about having her presence on the campus and great feedback from the teachers, that the connection that Deputy Reyes is making with the students in the classroom. And on the enforcement part of the grant, we're going to be doing decoy operations at various retail merchants in those communities to make sure that they're not selling to minors. So we have our youth council that will be working with those students, and we'll go out into those communities and try and buy tobacco products, whether it's a vaping device or combustible cigarettes. And Deputy Reyes and the Sheriff's Department will be part of that in supporting us. So we're going out there doing compliance checks, making sure all these retail merchants are up to date with their signage, making sure that their tobacco products are not located by candies or on countertops where they're made visible for students or young minors. So we're getting great feedback from all of our schools, and we greatly appreciate the support from the Sheriff's Department and Exeter PD.
Very good. Any questions, comments?
I do. Yes. Are vaping products included in this?
Absolutely. The Jule device, I don't know if you're familiar with that term, is basically an epidemic amongst teens. A Jule device is basically, is a flash drive that is a vaping device. And it was targeted and marketed for teens. And the Jule company is being slapped pretty hard right now by the governor. They've been given 30 days to change their marketing strategies to where they're not targeting teens. If I put a flash drive or a Jule device on the countertop right now, you can plug it into your ports on your computers to recharge it, and that's very popular. Parents aren't aware of it. Teachers don't know what they look like because it looks identical to a flash drive. You can change the colors. You can personalize it to a sports team, and they do that for a reason. So we are in the process of gathering vaping devices and the Jule devices and all electronic devices and putting a display board together. And we're going to use that for parent trainings and teacher trainings. And we're also going to be training the merchants at the stores about the dangers of vaping and all the flavored juices as well.
And my second, I think it's a great program. I think it's very important to do this. And I was reading in the report that the, now is the deputy, an existing deputy?
She's right behind me.
My fear, what's that?
She's right behind me.
All right, you're existing. I see you. I think it's great. My fear with grants is that after it runs out, you know, do we continue to pay for this program? Does the deputy just go back into their regular assignment?
This is a two-year grant.
Right.
And another cohort has already been out, and we've applied for that. And now we're going to be working with overtime and all the substations throughout the county. So we should find out on the acceptance of, we'll receive that grant within the next two weeks. So I think there's going to be more cohorts coming out with this. It's going to be continual funding because the money's there, and not a lot of agencies are applying for the money.
And if it is council at the end of the two years, then we just absorb that deputy and put him back in one of our vacancies.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect. Good luck.
Supervisor Vanderpoel? I think this is a great program. Really happy to see you targeting an area that really isn't paid much attention to, I feel. And I do think that even though Busby's here in street clothes today, he'd be straight out there helping to spread the positive message. But with that, I would move for approval, Mr. Chair. There's no public comments.
Sheriff Pedro is always looking for a way to make a bigger bang for our buck. But this right here, this actually puts an SRO on five campuses that normally wouldn't have it, so.
Awesome.
Great.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second?
No, I was just going to say, I think it ties into the undercover program you guys do where you send the undercover kids into the stores, check the merchants, see if they're selling to minors, so.
Yeah, that's part of the program.
He's part of that program, right?
That's a great, that's a great, it's a great program all the way around.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Shucklian. Please cast your votes, and the votes are four to zero, which is good because we need a four-fifth vote. So congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you for being here, and continue on.
Thank you very much.
Item number 26 is a request from County Council to approve the post-retirement employment of County Administrator, actually, well, I guess he's still legally, County Administrator Officer Michael C. Spotta as extra help attorney for the County Council's office effective January 1, and waive the 180-day waiting period to return for working position. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, and Ms. Benton, Jeff Kewen, Chief Deputy County Counsel. We'd like to retain Mr. Spotta's expertise. He's had long experience working in the, particularly with the Dairy Care litigation and the background with that, and this is our vehicle to do that. Because of the Pension Reform Act, there are certain hoops we have to jump through, and that's one reason why this is on the untimed agenda because the legislature felt it needed more spotlight on it, I guess. But the findings, we believe, can easily be made. He certainly has the expertise and the skills. Need them, at least for this matter. Hopefully, we can use him. As other land use matters may arise over the next few months, and call upon his experience. So any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Yeah, I have questions. First of all, I think it's a great idea. I did not see in the report a salary or hourly rate or contract or anything.
Approximately $50 an hour.
That's, for that knowledge, that's a great deal.
Yeah, that's good.
This board is very well aware of Mr. Spotta's expertise at land use matters and SEQA. And there's, believe me, $50 an hour is more than a bargain. It's a steal. It's a steal. And so that is a wonderful opportunity for Tulare County to have, and his willingness to continue to do that's great.
I would vote for approval.
Is there any other?
No, that's, I think it's a great idea.
Motion? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Motion by Supervisor Shucklian, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, four to zero.
Thank you very much.
We will now take up item number 28, a request from the Fire Department to approve an agreement with CAL FIRE California Climate Investment Grant Number. I'm not even going to go through all, it just keeps going on and on. We have our able fire chief here to explain it all to us in great detail.
I've drawn on enough for all of us. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Britt, congratulations, Ms. Peterson, and always, Ms. Benton. Things like this, this was an issue that was bestowed upon us in 2014, 2015. We know a fault of our own, 129 million dead trees, 29 of those that are in Tulare County. So given those facts, I think we've done a good job with dealing with them. Getting allied agencies to get involved, for example, the Alder Fire that we have that was the size of my office for about two weeks, that's now ballooned up to 1,400 acres. We have tied all that in and done some very good tree removal around the community of Doyle Springs to where it's safe, and for all practical purposes, that is out. So what we have is $195 million. Here's kind of an introduction and background of where we're going. And we'll have the big picture. We'll bring back previous item 27 in December. The CCI, the Climate, California Climate Investment Grant through the Forest Health Grant, allocated $195 million to improve watershed resiliency. The grant provides for local projects and activities, funding activities, hazardous fuel reduction, planning, fire prevention, education, with an emphasis on improving public safety and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We're going to be out there cutting and shipping trees. Hazard, the tree qualifying projects include hazardous fuel reduction, removal of dead and dying trees, and prevention planning and education. Five of those projects we'll be following will be selective tree moving, removing or thinning, and getting us in a better position so we can provide defensible space around the communities, provide fire breaks, modification of vegetation to get treatment done in advance of an advancing fire front, and reduce fuel loading around critical firing infrastructure. With our Foxtrot Fire App, we have looked at some of these communities on, you know, Doyle Springs. We know exactly, we have 53 structures up there. Sequoia Crest, we have 102, plus or minus three or four cabins in there. So we have some good intel, and this will just provide us that defensible area. These grants support the following risk reduction through the Five-Year Strategic Plan, CAL FIRE Tulare Unit Strategic Plan, our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, as well as our LATM, our Local Area Tree Mortality. Any questions? Okay, good. We'll move on.
Well, I was just going to say, and not only that, I mean, this, it's important, people know, this is... people, this is not like a first foray into this process, I mean, in many cases, we've gone to these areas before, so this is extending that protection, I know that particularly that's true up at Heartland, an area where I'm quite familiar with, but also what the work done by utility companies continually being done, Forest Service, Caltrans, there is a lot of forces at work, given the magnitude of the problem, not enough, really, but at least we're continuing to chip away at it, no pun intended, to make improvements, and so this is a great, great project. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. And accepting these grants will allow for the following, improve public safety, probability of success as we get into these, defending these assets at risk. Critical points, decision points, we know we have X amount of dead trees per acre, we're going to defend it with this amount of resources, or we're going to evacuate way sooner than what we would in any normal condition, normal burning condition. And reduction of hazardous fuels in high severity areas, with the pure fire last year, we saw some of that through there, every time you drive up there, gosh, I hope we don't get a fire here, and lo and behold, we did, but we had some systems in place to make for some great decisions. A secure long-term financial stability for the county through protective assessed valuation commodities, structures, and values at risk, and of course, reduce county fiscal risk changes in the 2018 to 23 CFMA. There used to be a section in CFMA, California Master Mutual Aid Agreement, that had a Section 46 where a government, local government entity could cry fiscal exhaustion, resource drawdown, and that section was taken out in this new contract, so that is not in there anymore. Item of heated debate with local governments, Kern County, ourselves are battling the same battle with the federal government, having to comply with an agreement that we're not a signatory to. So that will create some challenges for us, and this year, knock on wood, it has not affected us, it has affected some incidents in Kern County. Here are proposed projects, there are basics on fire breaks and thinning, the South Fork Fire Fuel Reduction is basically for evacuation and escape routes, the Silver City Hazard Removal, some thinning processes that are done for defensible spaces, the Posey Project is also for evacuation and defenses spaces, and then the last two, the Camp Nelson and the Heartland, are for fire breaks, community fire breaks to defend our communities. Here's some of the proposed actions, if you'd like, I can cover these in their entirety, or if you want me to do the Evelyn Wood reading dynamic and speed through them, I can also, they're all very important, but they're very wordy. South Fork Hazard Reduction, again, the proposed start date's April of 2020, we're going to treat 113 acres, and it is a proposed cost of 190, 466, and then that is basically for evacuation route, there's one way in and out of South Fork, Cinnamon Canyon in that area in there. Silver City, this will be more of a thinning project, trying to get into there and remove some of the diseased and dying trees to where if we have a large fire that runs through the Mineral King area, we will have local government assets that will be able to defend. A proposed start date on that is July of 2020, 175 acres of proposed treatment, and then the cost is around $200,000. Posey Hazard Fuel Reduction area, again, this is directly on evacuation routes, proposed start date of September 2020, 111 acres, $248,300. And this does the area around Christian Camp, evacuation of the community, so very important, potential life safety, especially in the summertime during our fire season. Camp Nelson, Community Defense Zone, this is a fire breaks, this surrounding the communities of Camp Nelson, Pier Point, start that in spring of 2021, approximately 425 acres, this is one of our more expensive ones, it's 523,145. And Heartland, again, with the fire breaks, this is, does kind of go both ways, it does have the fire break potential, but we do have an evacuation route, and in Heartland, Christian Camp, Pinehurst, which is across the county line, there are some significant life safety hazards depending on the season, and we have a start date up there of August of 2021, 167 acres and just under $200,000. Any questions on anything so far? Anyone want to double check my math on trees per acre?
There's a lot of trees per acre.
Thank you and acknowledge all of you for your participation and help in this process. The CAO staff and support staff has been amazing, helping us along the way. RMA Reed and his folks have been tremendous help to us, our cooperatives with CAL FIRE have been, our SRA areas, such a great working relationship, and the Forest Service. Requested actions, approve an agreement with CAL FIRE, any questions before I go into the long dissertation of requested actions?
Not a question, maybe just a comment, these California Climate Investments Grants, where do these proceeds come from?
It is a CAL FIRE grant, they're state-funded grant money.
Are these same as the cap and trade auction grants?
This is coming from that, yes.
Right, and I just wanted to point that out because I think a lot of times we hear cap and trade, and we hear, you know, we hear about it very negatively, but I think that we are obviously reaping some rewards of that, so just want to have that statement made. That's it.
And, this, oh, go ahead.
That's it.
Okay. And this process, as we move through, and then we go through a next cycle of grants, once we accept these, if the board chooses to do that, this is going to go far beyond my career, this may go far beyond Supervisor Vanderpoel's career.
Oh, that's far.
This is a long-term thing, this is a 12 to 16-year process, they're still dealing with the bark beetle in Riverside and San Bernardino County from the early 1990s when I was a young fireman with no gray hair, so it's going to be a long process.
Thanks, Charlie.
The requested action.
And one comment that I was going to make too, real quick, Chief, before you get into the requested actions, you know, I, I think that this is a good effort by the state to help address this problem, but it, you know, really is, when you look at the, the total picture and the total mass of dead trees that we are dealing with, it's a drop in the bucket, but this is a very important step. We're protecting very strategic resources and communities that are in these, isolated in the forest, but I really do hope that the federal government starts to strategically look at how they can address their problem on their land, and hopefully, we can begin to see some effort on their front as well, because together, everyone working together with grant programs, thinking outside the box, we're going to be able to achieve a lot more than what we're just achieving here with the CAL FIRE grants.
Absolutely. And you did hit, this is a drop in the bucket, but this is our bucket.
Our bucket, yeah.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments?
I just, I'd just like to say, as these trees age out, the dead trees, you're going to see more and more of them falling, and the main thing is to get these hazard trees away from our roads. We had one across Redwood Drive two weeks ago, so it, there's so many trees up there, but it's very important we get those hazard trees away from the roads because that could be real, real bad.
Oh, absolutely. It's, yeah, and it's, it's a huge problem, it's, that's an understatement. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move into the requested actions. Requested actions, approve an agreement with CAL FIRE Climate Control, CCI Grant Number 5GG17234 for 523,000, 5GG17235, 5GG12376, 5GG17237. Almost like I'm in planning. Prove requested agreement with CAL FIRE 5GG17238, authorize fire chief to designate to sign any related fund reimbursement requests, certifications, required quarterly progress reports, authorize chairman of the board to sign three copies of each grant agreement, prove categorical exemption, I'm really into planning now, and consistent with the SEQA, Title 14 California Code of Regulations, Sections 1, 5, 2, 6, 9, 5, 3, 0, 1, existing Substantial evidence, proposed activity will have significant effect on the environment, determine the proposed projects are excluded or exempt from SEQA on the grounds of projects consistent with the SEQA Title 14, CCR, Public Resource Code. I had an online auctioneer class this week, subdivision B for Emergency State Guidelines, Section 1, 5, 2, 6, 9, subdivision C, Emergency in Section 1, 5, 3, Class 1, existing facilities, and try to make the emergency, or sorry, the Environmental Assessment Officer at Tulare County Resource Management, or they're designated to file a notice of exemption with a Tulare County clerk. And then approve one-time transfer, $55,000 for 1920, 2021, and 2122, and this is basically for training, personal protective equipment and tools, this will be, it's broken down 16,000, 18,000, and 17,000, I think it comes up to 54 or 5. This will be ongoing for tools breaking, training, continuing education, OSHA requirements, so we can meet the intent of the grant.
I would like just to make a quick comment, one is that you presented these four different projects, but each one of them is a tremendous amount of work, I mean, so it's not as if, I appreciate the fact you brought them all together at one time, but I just want the public and our staff and, and the board members to acknowledge and realize, there's a tremendous amount of work into each one of these different planning projects, and I want to thank Eric Coyne for his engagement and involvement on this issue from, from day one, and I know there's a tremendous amount of time and effort's been put into this, and as you say, it's only a drop, but it's our drop, and it's important for us to take whatever steps we possibly can. I just have to make one quick comment, I, I saw an article the other day, and it was talking about if you're off highway driving to be safe, and they said, make sure you bring an axe with you, and then I saw this picture of this, about a four-foot diameter pine tree, or, or fir tree across the road, and I thought, you could be there for about two weeks chopping on that tree. My suggestion is you better take a pretty good-sized chainsaw. But anyway, this is a great, these are really needed projects, and going to Supervisor Vanderpoel's comment, one of the things that Supervisor Crocker and I met recently with the supervisor from the Sequoia National Forest, they are very much, you know, in favor of more aggressive and adaptive management on the forest, and one of the things that we need to look at really is combining our dollars, because money is a big issue, the federal money, that they don't have federal dollars either, and we've approved these monies with the state of California, in many cases, especially in our county, you can't spend much money on state lands because it's all public, federal lands, but there's nothing that says we can't use state funds on federal lands to, to affect, you know, the safety of in holders and that sort of thing, and so we need to be looking at those opportunities of working together, not only working together and planning, but also using our dollars wisely, so. With that, are there any other questions or comments?
Any public comments?
Any public comments on this matter? All right, I'll turn in a motion.
Well, I would make the motion of whatever the chief had told us.
That list, yeah, all the requested actions.
For approval, so.
All right. We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Shucklin, I think he could have done it the same way, all, please cast your votes, but we don't have a long meeting anyway, so thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and go to it. All right, that will take us then to item number, oh, that was our last item, I'm sorry, excuse me, went on to the next page, it was so long. We have no closed session today, council, is that my understanding?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, item A is off calendar, so there is no closed session today.
So the board will be adjourned today, and thank you all for being here.
How many more meetings is it, Steve? Four, four more meetings.
Have a safe Halloween, all of you out there, and your kids and grandkids, so take care.